We'll call the meeting to order of 11:413. Roll call.
Mayor Yanish.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
O'Ammon.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dacken.
Here.
Fagerly.
DeBleek.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Would you all please stand as we say the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor. I have one thing under miscellaneous.
Under miscellaneous. New business or old business?
It'd be new business.
New business.
Mayor Yanish?
Yes.
I believe it's proper for the, under Robert's Rules of Order, for him to state what that new item is.
Oh, it'll be related to Labor Relations Committee meeting.
Okay.
Are there any consent items or...
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Mayor Yanish?
Go ahead.
We need to have a correction to item F, just on the title. It was actually the Park... Let me get it correct. City of Wilmer Park Board Meeting that was held, not a Joint Powers Board Meeting.
City of Wilmer Park Board Meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I would like to pull the Planning Commission minutes and the community and rec the Joint Powers Board meeting or the Park Board meeting.
Do we have a motion to approve the remaining, uh, the remaining minutes?
Yes.
Also move Mr. Mayor.
We have the motion for the meeting.
Pardon me?
Also move Mr. Mayor.
We had it already.
We have it already.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the remaining consent items with the exception of the Planning Commission minutes and the community or the Park Board meeting minutes. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Councilman DeBleek, would you like to pull those minutes?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under the Planning Commission minutes, item number three, they had discussion about a technical charter school at Midwest Technology Campus. Is that something that we're going to be briefed on or... I see Steve Salzer is here. I don't know if he wants to comment on that.
We will start maybe with one of the board members, members from the Technical Academy here.
Could you introduce yourself?
I'm Steve Salzer. I'm the general manager for the Midwest Technology Campus. I reside at 412-19th Street Northwest in Wilmer. So, yes, we were approached by Technical Academies of Minnesota. They're looking at leasing one of our 18,000 square foot buildings on the campus to bring in a seven, uh, seventh through twelfth grade, uh, public charter school. So, we've, we've run that by our Board of Directors and we are 100% in support of the school coming. And I'm going to introduce Tammy Knick. She is a board member and she will brief you on kind of how it works and what it's all about. And then as you have questions, you can either ask me or Tammy.
Please do. Welcome.
Thank you. Yes. My name is Tammy Knick and I am on the board for Technical Academies of Minnesota. Now, I apologize, I might lose my voice. I'm just coming off of having pneumonia for the past couple of weeks, so bear with me. So, Technical Academies of Minnesota was authorized by Innovative Quality Schools and we are scheduled to open four charter schools in the state of Minnesota over the next five years. And Wilmer was recently selected as one of the first sites because of the strong and progressive business and community and educational opportunities that you have to offer here. Wilmer's steady growth in population and technical and professional jobs makes Wilmer an ideal location for our school. Our school is going to be focused on career and technical skills. We want to help prepare youth for the future and that future may be having an internship with a local business to gain some knowledge and information about, is this a career that might be of interest to me? They might do some post-secondary education out at the Ridgewater College or through online classes. And part of their senior project when they graduate is to do a community-wide presentation on a project of their choice. And what makes a school so unique is students don't come in and sit in a class. It's going to be set up more like a business where each student will have their own desk, they'll have their own computer, their workstation, and they will work independently with the help of an advisor to develop these projects throughout their years at Technical Academies. We will be enrolling seventh through 12th graders and the maximum number of students that we can have in our school is 150. We like to keep it in, as a smaller learning community, so we'll have a ratio of about 10, 15 students to every advisor or teacher. And so I could go on and on and tell you all about it, but I'd like to know if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
Are there any questions from the council? Councilman O'Ammon?
How does this affect our local school system? And will it be duplicating or actually assisting the school district in some of their needs for these students?
Well, we feel that it, it would be a very complimentary option for, for families in the area. A school choice is what we like to call it. And, and we will be catering to those students who maybe aren't finding success in the regular education setting. Maybe they've struggled with classes for different reasons. So, we might, we might be catering to maybe a gifted and talented type crowd who want to come in and explore more of their interest areas in their education. Or we might be pulling in students with special needs. We will be providing special educational services along with ELL services to the students. And so, you know, we, we, we hope that we'll be able to draw students from not only the Wilmer community, but from maybe the six surrounding school districts as well. Our model of our school is going to be based upon a very successful school model here in Minnesota. It was one of the first charter schools that was started for project-based learning, which is what our school will be focused on. And Minnesota New Country School, which is in Henderson, Minnesota, is a model that we will be using for our school as well. And they pull from 10 different school districts in the area. And this, I, I work for a school district right now, GFW, given Fairfax-Winthrop. And many of our students have went to this school when it first opened. And our school districts collaborate very well together. We share some programming and busing and, and so it works really well in our community for students to have another option for a school choice.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Tammy, as far as student selection, how are the students, you're looking at 150 in the school? What is the process for somebody to get into the class or into the school? Is there an application process? Can you explain that a little bit?
Sure. Well, since we will be a public school, it will be open to any students. Any student is able to enroll. And if we reach that 150 max, or if we get more than 150 students who want to come to the school, we will do some type of a lottery drawing to pull students. And we'll want to try and keep the grade levels pretty comparable, so like we wouldn't want to have 100 seventh graders and only 10, you know, in another class. We'll try and do the best we can as far as keeping the grades levels even.
Thank you. Okay. Councilman Dacken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming to our city. You indicated that we were one of four cities. Can you tell us a little more about why specifically Wilmer was chosen? I mean, what were the strong points that were considered with respect to Wilmer? We're pretty proud of our tech campus, obviously. And I'm sure that must have been one of the significant things that we've done here recently that, that allowed us to be chosen.
Yes, exactly. Some of the other communities, first of all, to let you know that we are looking at, Owatonna is one of the cities that we're looking at and, and they have the Riverland College and MSU Mankato is very close to Owatonna for the, for the same reasons, Ridgewater, you know, being located in Wilmer. We're also looking at the Rochester area, Jackson, Minnesota, and one other one, oh, Waldorf, Minnesota. So, those are the other areas that work. Wilmer is the only one that is moving forward at this point. Owatonna, we have a group that's working in Owatonna to do some more investigation. But Wilmer is scheduled to open next fall. And then why Wilmer was selected? Did a lot of research, a group of us this summer, on different communities and what they have to offer, what they could offer for students, what our students could offer to the community. And definitely having Ridgewater here was a plus. And we, we just kept reading all sorts of wonderful things about new businesses coming here and with the population increase, that's not happening in a lot of rural communities out in Minnesota. And so, we just really felt Midwest campus, you know, all the opportunities that are alone just out on that campus for us, to partner with people and with all the different businesses. I think I read somewhere on a website that there are over 500 businesses in town and just having that many people available that we could connect with possibly and link up with our students to do those internships and those mentor, mentoring relationships just seemed like such a perfect fit. And Wilmer is my hometown, originally from here, went to school here, graduated from Wilmer High School when it was in the old building. And so, I have lots of family and friends from the area and they've all been so supportive and it's, it's just been like this is, was meant to be. I mean, we just started researching and finding all this information out and it just seems like a really good fit. We're excited to be coming here.
How does the school, the charter school compete with the public school?
So, you know, I, I guess some people may see it as a compliment or a competition. We see it more as like a complimentary partnership. And we really do hope to partner with Wilmer Public Schools and with some of the other surrounding schools and with Community Christian School and, and share some programming and share some activities. And, you know, we're each going to have a little niche that we might be able to offer each other that would be good for students. And that's really what it's all about is, it's what's in the best interest for students. And if we can provide a different type of educational experience that might work for other students, that's what our goal is.
Councilman O'Ammon?
Oh, just one question out of curiosity. Were the sites that were selected, the towns that were selected, based on low grade point averages?
Based on what? I'm sorry.
Uh, low grade point averages?
No, we did not look at that at all. No.
Thank you.
Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for coming and it's, it's an exciting prospect. Did I hear Steve Wright saying we're gonna, you're gonna take over one whole building?
Yes.
And that will all be remodeled and ready to go by September? Wow. That's ambitious, but they can do it. That, that's just really exciting.
Yes, it is. And, and with the 150 students, we were looking for about 20,000 square feet and one of the cottages is 18,000 square feet. And it's, it's very doable for us to remodel that to fit our students where we'll have some open areas. We'll have some cubicle-type areas for student workspace. We'll have some studios where students can do some work or some laboratory-type classrooms. So, I think it's going to be a really great building. We're excited.
We have some amenities, you know, we have our gymnasium and we have a lot of green space and softball diamond volleyball courts, that type thing that we wanted to kind of use and work with. So, we've got those in place too, so we think it's very, very affordable.
Thank you. Councilman DeBleek?
Yeah, I was going to say thank you, Tammy, for coming and just that I think it's a real, would be a real nice fit. I think the technology campus out there has, has, has a lot of things to offer and this will really be a real complement to that campus as well. And just like to thank you for selecting Wilmer.
Thank you. And I'd like to invite you all, we are going to be having a community and business leader meeting on November 21st. And I have a, a invite, a paper handout, if you would like a copy. That will be two different meetings out there, scheduled at 4:00 and 5:30 PM. And we'd like you all to come and learn more about the school and see how we might be able to work together and partner together.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I'm going to cover just one more thing because it did pass through the city planning on, on one condition, and that was for Midwest to provide them with a parking plan. Parking, of course, has been an issue on the campus and as we bring more businesses, we need to deal with that. So, we are in the process of working on a parking plan to be submitted to the Historic Society. Of course, all of that needs to be approved by Historic. We have submitted before, we've had some approvals. We're putting in a 100-spot lot next spring and we were turned down on some. So, we're going to be going back to Historic with some more plans, getting parking up there on that, stretch up there along the lakeside cottages. So, I will be going back to city planning with that plan in probably two to four weeks. But just wanted to let you know that that's, that's the reason for that, so.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Any further questions? Councilman O'Ammon?
One other curiosity. What's, what's the long-term plan with your, with your school as far as growth or is this anticipated to get larger in the future? Or what are your predictions or your long-term plan on this, if you have any comment on that?
Well, it's interesting. If you could come back to the microphone, please. Thank you.
No, we've visited with lots of different groups and lots of different people from the community already and they've already told us, you know, you're going to be full right away, you're going to have to do a lottery drawing your first year. And several people have asked, when is the elementary building going to open? And so, you know, we don't have plans for that right now. Our plan is to open the seventh through 12th building and we don't have the authority to expand that without going back to our authorizer Innovative Quality Schools and developing a new proposal and submitting that to the Minnesota Department of Education. So, we don't have those plans right now, but people have asked about it and are wondering about it elementary.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mayor Yanish?
Go ahead.
I have one more question. Do you see kids moving in and out of there? If they come in in seventh grade and, and decide in eighth grade they want to go back to their regular school, is that something that's doable or once they commit, are they, the curriculum such that they need to stay?
No, I, I believe that we will have students moving in and out. I mean, we do with this charter school that I work with in the district. We have students coming back and forth. You know, it's not a school for everyone. Students who come to this school have to be highly motivated. They have to have some sort of direction of what they want to do in their life or we help them do some of that through the assessments that we'll be using with them early on. But since a lot of their work is done independently through research and working on the computer or doing things out in the community, you know, they are going to have to be able to have the skill to do that. And, and not every student wants that or can manage that. And so, I do see us maybe fluctuating back and forth and we will certainly be open to
Any further questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
On behalf of Midwest, we'd like to thank you again for supporting us in, in everything we do. It's, it's really been good for Wilmer, so thank you again for that.
Yes, you're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One, one other item under the Planning Commission minutes is the, the five-year capital improvement plan. I see the Planning Commission reviewed that and suggested that there be some stormwater initiatives maybe looked at for that. Is that going to be coming back to the Public Works Committee?
Well, the CIP will come back to the, will, will come back as part of the budget process and, and the council will be having some additional discussion on that, so there'll be an opportunity to review that and make changes.
Yes, I have a motion to, to file the Planning Commission minutes if there's no other questions on it. Second.
We have a motion on the floor to file the Planning Commission minutes along with the other minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. And now we, we have pulled the other minutes, I'm sure.
Just a question on the, with the Park and Rec minutes that the, there's the updated plan or the park plan, Steve, that was presented to the Joint Powers. Is that, will that be scheduled to be presented to one of the council committees or the council at some future point in time?
Mayor Yanish, members of the council, yes, we're in the middle of that process. We're meeting monthly and our, our goal is to bring that back through committee work, hopefully by the end of the year, if not early in 2014. So, we're, that work is not completed yet.
What was presented was a draft and a kind of a status report of, of the feedback that had been received as part of the survey process. And that's just one component of the, of the public input process.
Okay. I see some of those items may be fit with our planning process that the council is going to be doing.
Yeah, they may. And so, there'll be an opportunity, I think, as it continues to move forward.
Okay. I guess if there are more, anybody has any other questions on that? You, Ron has a question.
Okay, I'm sorry, Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Bruce, for pulling those minutes. Just a quick, maybe Steve could mention the, an update on the gun range. I noticed you mentioned in there, under the auditorium, is there, what's happening so the public knows that there, this isn't just sitting still?
I think that's a better question for Mr. Halliday. He's taken over the lead on that project.
Okay. On the last couple of weeks, we have met with Braun Intertech and they have, did the follow-up testing, both for lead dust and lead paint. And those results should be coming here this week. In conversations with engineers to start dividing, designing a standalone HVAC system, they're all waiting for those results. And in the meantime, we've talked to some cleaning companies. They all want blueprints of our building. Our auditorium blueprints are only support-based, they're not room divided, which they wanted. So, our own staff in the middle of shutting down the street improvement project are drafting blueprints that'll be used for those quotes. How bad timing, they haven't been able to work at it the past week as they are closing down all the streets that are supposed to be concluded at this time. So, we expect Braun Intertech's test results to come Thursday or Friday of this week and we'll get those right back out to some engineering firms and continue with the process.
Thank you.
Councilmember?
Just a point of clarification, maybe Steve would address that too, that this was not a Joint Powers Board meeting, that it was the Park Board meeting?
Right.
And is that, that's an annual meeting? Is that correct, Steve?
Park Board minutes of October 25th, am I right?
Mm-hmm.
Mayor Yanish, members of the council, that's indeed true. As part of the charter, we are to meet as a park board, not just the Community Education and Recreation Board. So, annually, we will hold a park board meeting and address the needs of the park and that's where this plan is directed towards, is the parks. So, it was appropriate that the intent of that meeting was to go over where we are in the process of the park plan and to go over the survey information that had been received so far. So, that, that indeed was our annual meeting for the park board.
You know, I have a question on that, on the gun range. Why did it take 35 years to become tested?
The, the testing, we determined, as was discussed a few meetings ago and earlier, is, and there was a, there was a problem with the HVAC system that we discovered on a routine inspection of the building. And when we discovered that HVAC problem, we didn't really know how, quite, quite how long the HVAC had not been functioning properly. So, we felt it was important to do some, some testing to determine if we had any areas of concern and that was the initial testing we did. And then the follow-up is to better, you know, which, which did indeed indicate that we had some areas of concern and some problems with the HVAC system. And the follow-up is to narrow that scope down and understand exactly what needs to occur to, to clean the building and to deal with those areas as well as determining a more up-to-date HVAC system for the facility.
Thank you. Councilman Dacken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could follow up with Kevin, do we have a set of as-built drawings for the auditorium and the modifications that have taken place over the years? Do they exist somewhere within our city repository?
We have the 1937, 3637 Works Project Administration initial blueprints showing the exterior and the support beams. We have not had an up-to-date system of all the rooms that we have subdivided after that, except that the gun range blueprints in 1978 roughly were put together showing the HVAC system. So, it's a real hodgepodge collection.
Hodgepodge is a good description.
I guess make a motion to file the park board. Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the park board minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. At this time, we will open the hearings for the dangerous animals. Chief Wifels, would you like to explain that to us, please?
Mayor, members of the council, essentially what you have before you is a request and tonight's the first open hearing meeting on a dangerous animal ordinance update. What we had in place before by state law allows us to take action on dangerous animals. However, it provided no recourse for the citizen who owns the animal if they wanted to contest whether or not an animal was found to be dangerous. Additionally, what our city was lacking was naming a specific entity, body, or person as the animal control authority. The ordinance proposal that you have before you or the addition does both of those things.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Public.
Mr. Public, sir.
Okay, the, I'm sorry, we do have to, um, call in the public, see if there's any questions from the public. Are there any comments or questions? Please step up and introduce yourself as.
Hello, I'm Bobby Baumann with the Humane Society. And I'm just wondering, with reading through the state law, will the person who was bitten, the victim, have to file complaint with the police department in order for the process to start?
Yes, it would have to come to our attention in order for it to even be recognized by the city. So, if a person was bitten and said nothing to no one, there would be no way to know that, that animal was or has the potential to even be deemed dangerous.
Okay. The other, in Friday's paper, there was a family that two children were bitten when they were out trick-or-treating. Under the potentially dangerous or dangerous dog ordinance, would those dogs be considered potentially dangerous?
Without knowing the exact specifics of the bite, there are instances where it would be allowed by city ordinance or by law to, for an animal to bite somebody. If someone was breaking into your house, that certainly would be okay if the animal's on its property and controlled and somebody approaches the animal in a threatening manner, again, the animal would not be considered to be a dangerous animal. So, there are, again, I don't, under the specifics that you speak about, I don't know. You know, obviously, I guess if I was a dog in, in my own home and strange costume people come up, especially a lot of them, maybe I would tend to be more aggressive, but I can't speak to that instance.
Okay. I know we'll be, you know, probably getting calls from people in, if the police department would be the animal control, that would be who we would refer them to for any questions on that.
The way the ordinance update is written, it would make the police department the animal control agency. We would do nothing different than we've already done or do so far in instances like this. Where the ordinance is changed mostly is to give the owner the ability to contest the fact that a... ability to contest the fact that a dog or an animal is deemed to be dangerous. How it works now is we send all complaints to the city attorney where we receive on an animal bite. The attorney looks at the police report and then makes a decision whether or not he feels the circumstances would designate that animal by state statute as a dangerous animal, and then sends the owner a letter thereof stating that his opinion is the animal's dangerous, and they need to chip the animal, they need to have it neutered, along with other things. Should the owner fail to do anything about that, there really was no more recourse from the city end of things that we could do. The second thing was, is recognizing that the owners have rights, owners of animals have rights. Just because the city attorney deemed the animal to be dangerous, our ordinance had nothing that specified the city attorney to be the animal control authority. So, this ordinance now, or this ordinance change now sets it up that the Public Works Public Safety Committee is the deciding board, after listening to all the facts on a bite instance, to make that determination, and actually gives the owner of any animal an opportunity to be heard and present their side of the case.
Okay. The only other comment that I wanted to make was that, you know, that there'd be no breed ban enacted by the city. Just for instance, that there was a rash of poodles that were going around biting people, that the city wouldn't declare that people wouldn't be allowed to own poodles. It, I think it all has to be looked at as case-by-case situation. Thank you.
In response to that concern, I'd just like to say that nowhere in the ordinance does it define anything as breed or the breed of animal. It regulates animals in general. So, I guess if you had a goldfish that was dangerous, that probably could fall under there, too. I don't think that'll ever happen, but I think mainly it will be dogs, but we wrote it broad enough that we don't have to come back and revisit it. Breeds, types of animals were not discussed, and it's based strictly on animal behavior.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further comments from the audience? Hearing none, I will turn it over to the council. We have closed the public hearing. We'll turn it over to the council.
Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for the attorney. On the appeals process, excuse me, it talks about, it has 14 days, and they can go to the Public Works Safety Committee, and then it talks about the Public Works Safety Committee Chair issuing some sort of notification. I, I think we're missing something in here about the city council. You know, I don't, it seems like that all, all the work of all the committees are subject to approval by the city council, and I don't see that we have that, that in here, and I think we could easily correct it, but...
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Anderson, the language that you referred to, I think, was developed by the city's prosecuting attorney in conjunction with the police chief, and it seems to me you could, as a council, pass this ordinance as-is and essentially delegate the quasi-judicial function of hearing these appeals to the committee, and that's how I would interpret this if the ordinance passes without amendment, that you, that the council has delegated its authority to hear these appeals to the committee, and the committee then is the final actor in it. Certainly, if it's the council's preference to have that come to the council rather than the committee, you can make that amendment and make that policy change.
And we can do it that way. I, I just, I just, you know, I don't want to leave somebody out there, and then all of a sudden, it comes to the city council, and we're going through the minutes, and then we, somehow that decision gets reversed. Just don't want that person to be left out there. So, we could either say subject to the approval of the Public Works Safety Committee and the city council, or we could delegate it. But I think we need to do one or the other. And, and I will move that we amend it, but I'm going to base it.
Well, I guess.
I amend it based on what you think is the easiest.
My, I guess my response to that is, if the city council wants to have this authority delegated to the committee, I think your language is effective to do that.
You think it does?
I think by passing this ordinance, you've essentially delegated it to the Public Works Public Safety Committee to be the final decision-maker. So, my recommendation would be if the council wants instead to have that final authority, that we work out an amendment to it, to do that. But if you're comfortable delegating that to the Public Works Public Safety Committee, I think the way it's written, I think it's effective to do that.
I think that'd be the only, only thing in the, in the city that's, that we delegate full authority to.
It may well be. So, if it's a...
And, and I don't have a problem with that, just so that we're clear on, on how we do it. So, if you think that, that we're, that we are in fact delegating that responsibility, and, so when that comes to the city council and we go through the minutes, there's no voting on it or anything, it's just for information only, then?
Correct. Yep. You would have passed and heard in saying that the appeal process in that case was to go to the committee, and the committee is the one that decides it.
Probably not the way I would have written it, but, okay.
Okay.
Councilman Christensen, did you have a comment?
No, he answered my question.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman, or Councilmember?
Just a question. I had asked this at the committee level, the way it was written, the, the Public Works Committee votes on it, and the chair carries forward the...
Correct.
Correct. Because the wording doesn't specifically, I'm trying to remember the exact spot. That might be why Councilman Anderson was asking the same thing.
I think we're looking at Section 457, subsection D, I think. Well, there's one C procedure, and there's another one under D, subsequent offenses that mention the Public Works Public Safety. Envisions, the way I would characterize it, the, the ordinance as it's drafted, I think envisions that the Public Works Public Safety Committee is the final arbiter of any appeals and would issue the decision of the committee as the final, as the city's final adjudication, as it is, of any appeals of the potentially dangerous or dangerous dog designations. Certainly, if members of the council aren't comfortable with the language, you know, I've heard your concerns, we can certainly try and clarify that and bring it back next meeting.
Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, we have other appeals boards, too, for fire and, name a couple, Kevin. You, we've got, I know I've sat on...
Well, the council is the appeals board in 458 C1. If the homeowner appeals that action, they write, they have 14 days to reclaim the animal, an appeal to its termination by submitting to the city administrator a written request for a hearing before the city council. So, you're the appeal of the Public Works Committee.
Right.
I believe, I'm sorry to jump in, I believe the distinction is with respect to dangerous dog declarations as opposed to potentially dangerous dog designations. Seems to me this was drafted with the intent that the committee could handle appeals related to potentially dangerous dog designations, but when you get to the level of actually declaring a dog to be dangerous, then it's in the hands of the council. Is that your understanding?
Chief?
That, that is correct. There's two parts to this ordinance. There's potentially dangerous and dangerous, and people get a little confused when we talk about both because they seem to be intermixed. Before you can make an animal deemed to be dangerous, first you have to recognize it as potentially dangerous. So, that's the first step, and that's handled solely by the Public Works Public Safety Committee. Once an animal has been deemed potentially dangerous, if a person does not do what state statute says they're supposed to do, such as get the animal neutered, have it chipped, or follow the other guidelines that's already written in state statute that they're supposed to comply with, we could go on then with either another bite or multiple violations as a potentially dangerous animal to now deem it a dangerous animal. The animal could not be put down before it's deemed to be a dangerous animal, and an owner would no longer comply even at that level. So, at the first step, you have the Public Works Public Safety Committee making the decision that an animal is potentially dangerous. They also make a decision that the animal is dangerous, but at that point, if a citizen did not like the Public Works Public Safety Committee's decision, they could go further and appeal it to the council for the final authority.
Thank you. Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that, I will make a motion to approve an ordinance creating Chapter 4 Animals, Article 3 Dangerous Animals.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to adopt the motion, number, and publish. Go ahead.
Just a question on definitions. You're assuming, or this ordinance assumes, dog and cat. Are there any other instances out there where you could have a dangerous animal that would be a domesticated animal?
I can't think of any. I'm...
That our ordinance would allow?
I can tell you from experience, well, first of all, we, we regulate all other types of animals, but had we left it with just dog and cat, for some reason, if somebody's illegally keeping another type of animal in the city that we're not aware of, I know people who've been attacked by emus, seriously, our officers have, but, you know, I, there's, there's some exotic pets people might keep. I could envision somebody at some point thinking that it would be cool to keep maybe an alligator in their apartment or in their house. I know it just happened up in northern Minnesota here where a couple of alligators got left loose in a lake, but we don't, we don't know what people have in their house.
Mm-hmm.
So, rather than just leave it for dogs and cats, and cats don't even concern me too much, this is mainly going to be directed, I'm sure, for dogs, but why write the ordinance and limit it to only dogs, and then some, for whatever unknown reason, down the road, come across a situation where it would have been nice to have it for a different type of animal, you've already taken care of that problem?
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Ammon?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries. At this time, we will open the hearing for the ordinance on the amending Chapter 2, Administration, Article 2, Officers and Employees, Wilmer Code. Is there anybody that wants to speak from the audience?
Kevin will explain it.
Okay, Kevin, if you want to explain. I'm sorry.
Mayor Yanish, members of the council and the audience, you have before you an ordinance that is detailing the tasks of the city attorney. The Wilmer Charter Commission has worked on a couple of the administrative duties inside our city, that being the city administrator and the city attorney. The city administrator ordinance is in place, and it is required to have the tasks of the city attorney enumerated in an ordinance. And you have before you a draft prepared by the city attorney showing the duties and responsibilities that he believes covers all the acts that is given to him, and it is written in such a way that, and so is the city charter, that the city attorney could be an employee or a contract individual. It's indifferent, and the lists of those duties are before you. On behalf of the Charter Commission and on staff who prepared this, it's the staff's recommendation that you adopt this ordinance with those duties as listed.
Do we have any questions? Yeah, at this particular point, we'll talk to the audience. If the audience has any questions or comments on this, if none, hearing none, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to the council. Does the council have any questions or comments?
Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Who we adopt, assign a number and publish?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to assign a number and publish the ordinance. Adopt. All those in favor, roll.
One, one question, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
As it relates to other city departments, particularly the MUC and the hospital, are they required to sign contract with the same attorney as the city is using, or is it just...
Well, now, that is a good question. Both of those are subsets of the city. However, the cities, I guess I would lean to say that is not a requirement. It is for the city proper.
Mr. Scott.
Let the city attorney weigh in, I guess.
My interpretation of it, certainly there's nothing in this ordinance that would require either of the city's two primary commissions, the utilities commissioner of the hospital, to use the services of the city attorney. I understand traditionally they have.
I know, it's, it's probably a good business practice to do it that way, but...
But it's not a requirement.
Okay. All right.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
A couple of questions, Robert. Thank you. On item, our item number one, to act as legal advisor of the city council, should that, should mayor and city council be included, or is that automatically a given that the mayor is included in all these processes?
I believe that the mayor is included whenever the term city council is used.
Okay, thank you. And also, and of the officers of the city, could you define officers, or what's your definition of officers?
Officers would be, I think, any elected officials or city staff. Obviously, we're talking in this ordinance about when they're acting in their capacity as, you know, in their city capacity, in their official capacity.
Okay, so define city staff. Are, are we supposed to be listing these, or just city staff to what degree?
City staff would include any employee of the city. It wouldn't extend to consultants, for example.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen?
Aye.
Ammon?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. At this particular point, we will have a presentation from the Dale Houston on the Minnesota award that our downtown has gotten.
Well, good evening. I'm Dale Houston. I'm one of the executives over at Rice Hospital, and I'm also a board member of the Wilmer Design Center, and I'm here on that capacity today to, to share with you an award that the Wilmer Design Center received in September, and I will pass this around for you to take a look at. The, the award that we received was a national accreditation from the Main Street Program in Minnesota, and the Wilmer Design Center, what's really a distinction of this is that the Wilmer Design Center and the Wilmer community is the first nation, the first Minnesota community to get this national accreditation. It was achieved by meeting 11 different accreditation standards, which measures not only the program of the Main Street Minnesota program, which is design, economic restructuring, promotion, and organization, but it also met the accreditation requirements for how well the program manages itself, its overall strength, its effectiveness in the community, its management of resources, and its planning for the future. And it's really a feather in our cap as a community to receive this accreditation, and I think with all of the communities around the state that I have focused on downtown redevelopment and revitalization, I, I am just delighted that Wilmer was the first to receive the national accreditation. And I wanted to share this with you on behalf of the board of the Wilmer Design Center, because the city council and the city itself has been in incredible support in, in us working on this together to get this accreditation and to get the recognition in the state for our, our hard work that we've been doing in continuing to promote and revitalize the downtown area. So, I just wanted to, to share that with you, and thank you very much for your support. I know Steve Ammon sits with us on board meetings often most of the time, and we really appreciate your support and, and staying linked with you, and all the work that we're trying to do to continue to make downtown Wilmer a great place and a great part of our community.
Thank you very much. We're very proud of you.
Thank you. Thank you.
What you've done for downtown. Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Dale? Thank you again. I think an applause is...
Thank you very much.
At this time, we will have the Wilmer City Council open forum. Is anyone scheduled to speak?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Bob Score has signed up.
Mr. Bob Score, would you please come to the podium, please? Damon Adders.
Name's Bob Score, 617 Southwest 14th Street, Ward Two. Mayor, council members, I have a couple of questions. It's kind of old hat, but I'm here to get some hardcore answers on some of the stuff. Again, I'm going to bring up the wind turbines. I see in the paper, it says, "Breakers are coming." Maybe seven days before that gets taken care of. Question is, where do we sit on those things? And now with all the nice wind we've had, who's going to pay for this non-power that we're not making? And are these things here to stay, or are we going to get some other replacements? Or what is the real scoop with those things?
You'd be our liaison. Would you have the expertise, would you talk to Charlene about that?
We actually have a report in finance committee.
Okay.
You know, because we had a report from utilities, but...
Yeah. Well, just, let's say, they are, utilities is the city department that owns and operates them.
Oh, I understand that.
The wind turbines are under warranty. They are being repaired by, under warranty.
But now, is this extended warranty, or is this warranty?
This was an extended warranty that was purchased by the utilities to extend the initial warranty on them, so. And granted, yes, they have been off for a while, and I know that was some struggles to get the right parts and understand from, that those parts are here and being installed this week, so.
My other question is, it says in the paper, well, I don't get the Wilmer scandal sheet, so I look online to check things out. It says, "Once they're back, once they get the breakers in, they'll be running normally again." What's normal with those things? Can anybody tell me that? Will they be running better than they, well, they gotta be running better than they have been, but even when one is online, one hasn't been offline. Myself, I don't feel the track record is very good on those two. Other towns have many of them, and they run all the time.
I...
I mean, who do I talk to to really get down to the...
I think the most appropriate place would be actually at the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Meeting, which, and they meet, are they meeting on Tuesday because of the holiday, council member?
Yeah, they meet next Tuesday.
Tuesday, the, Tuesday the 12th? They'll be meeting Tuesday the 12th, and then they meet at noon here in the council chambers, and that would be the best place to have those questions answered.
Okay, thank you. My other one is a quiet zone on 16th and Trot. Also, before that's a quiet zone. It's been done for quite a few months now, and I talked to a gale that lives right next to the tracks there, and she said it's worse than it was before. What is the status on that one?
I don't know.
Mr. Peterson, do you want to respond to that?
We were notified several weeks ago that the crossing had been reviewed and approved and that the covers could come off the signs. The signs have been uncovered, and there have been no whistles there for, to the best of my knowledge, the better part of two weeks.
I live on 14th Street, and I think you're wrong on that one, but you might be close, but...
You might be hearing a different crossing, but that one is...
Because I just talked to the gale last week at physical therapy that works there, who lives right next, last house on the right, going west. Anyway, okay.
Do you have further questions?
I have one more.
Okay.
Candy High Avenue between 12th Street and 15th Street Southwest. The elevation of that street, the curb elevation, what is up with that one?
We're very much aware of that. By the way, Bruce, would you like to explain that?
There's really not much to say, except that there were some construction issues with elevation. We worked with the engineering firm that was hired to design and to monitor the construction of that section of Candy High Avenue. They made some changes to the design and tore some part of it out and replaced it. It is not 100% satisfactory. Their response is that it continues to function like it did prior to the project. We will be having additional conversations with the engineering firm.
Okay. That's pretty good. All right? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Appreciate you coming. Are there any other people that would like to speak? Hearing none, I will move into the next item, the Finance Committee Report for October 28th. Mr. Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on our agenda was public comment, and there was no one there to comment. Second item is the Municipal Utilities Quarterly Report. General Manager Hump and Finance Director Hump had presented the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Financial Report as of September 30th, 2013. Compared to the third quarter 2012, total revenues are about the same at $23 million. Operating expenses are up slightly at $16.9 million due to a couple of unforeseen expenses for boiler repairs and a workers' comp audit. On the balance sheet side of things, current assets include $8 million in cash, and it was noted there is little long-term debt at only $8.4 million. There was some discussion on the status of the wind turbines and their malfunction. Excuse me. Mr. Hump noted that according to the contract with the manufacturer, the MUC is entitled to a lost revenue claim as a result of turbines not operating to their warranted level. The turbines are in the final year of their warranty, and that will expire September of 2014. We had quite a discussion on that, and we took this matter for information. The next item was discussion on the 2014 mayor's budget. We had a proposal from Church and Associates that was requested by Mr., or Mayor Yanish. He submitted a proposal to provide lobbying services to the city of Wilmer for $2,500 a month. This expenditure was not included in either the mayor's or the city administrator's budget. David Church had previously provided services to the city of Wilmer through 2011, and he currently provides services to the Wilmer Municipal Utilities. It was noted that Mr. Church primarily works for federal funding needs and doesn't do much on state funding issues. After some discussion, Mayor Yanish determined that the Church contract does not need to be addressed in the 2014 budget, and the committee pretty much concurred with that. We are having a meeting of the full council to talk about the budget on November 19th. And because that's going to potentially be a long meeting, we thought we would start that meeting at 3:00 PM, and I will be here in the utilities auditorium. We'll start the meeting out with budget presentations from the HRA, the Wilmer Municipal Utilities, and Rice Hospital. And then we'll begin our discussion and dissection of the 2014 budget. Again, I would ask and request if any council members need any additional information, please get those requests into Charlene as soon as you can. Councilmember Nelson requested information from the mayor prior to the November 19th meeting reflecting his justification of the budget reductions that he made to travel, memberships, professional services. Mayor Yanish said that he would not provide detail on how he made these reductions, but noted that he chooses, he chose these specific items because he did not feel other areas of the budget could be cut due to contractual and legal obligations, and it was the council's role to now review and recommend. Councilmember Fagerly asked if the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities had been contacted for a reduction in membership fees and if the city is required to be a member of the National League of Cities. Staff will contact the State Chapter prior to the 19th meeting to inquire about a possible reduction in fees. It was also noted that membership costs for the National League of Cities is minimal. Questions were raised regarding the mayor's October 15th update published on the city's website regarding budget discussion issues. And that we took all of that for information. The next item were some reports that we looked at. Those were the September 2013 Rice Trust, third quarter Rice Trust, September 30th Cash and Investment Portfolio, third quarter investment activity, 10-year historical investment balances by quarter, third quarter interest and dividends by institution, and 10-year historical earnings by quarter. That was also for information. We had no old and no new business, so unless there are questions, I'd move to file these minutes.
Second. The motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Finance Committee dated October 28th, 2013. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Public Work Safety Committee Report for October 29th. Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under public comment, there were no one present to comment. Item number two had to do with the proposal to modify the scope of services slash consulting fees for the Midwest Lift Station and Lakeland Drive project. Mr. Brian Bolig of Bolig Inc. presented a proposal to modify the scope of services and fees for the Midwest Lift Station slash Lakeland Drive project. The proposed changes are as a result of the change from the reconstruction of Lakeland Drive to an overlay project only. The original fee was $320,261, and with the increase, will hold $413,912.96. Committee had questions of Mr. Bolig regarding his relationship between the changes in project scope and the change in fees. After some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the resolution to approve the amended scope of services and consulting fees.
Second. The resolution has been made and seconded to approve the amended scope of services and consulting fees. Is there any discussion?
Mayor Yanish?
Yes.
I think it might be appropriate for Mr. Peterson to clarify. I know I asked about it before, that part of this project will be to bring back a design for how that overlay and how the street will be laid out. Is that correct, that that still hasn't been decided?
That's correct. The ultimate design of Lakeland Drive has not been determined yet. That's part of the analysis. It will be done by Bolig Inc. Being considered is to leave the two-lane section as currently constructed, or to go to a full three-lane section to move traffic a little better with a continuous center turn lane, and then possibly some striping of right turn lanes where appropriate and where we have the right of way to do so. One of the requirements of that would be the elimination of parking between Highway 12 or between Becker Avenue and Wilmer Avenue, which at the staff level, we believe to be totally appropriate if we're going to recognize Lakeland Drive for the major thoroughfare that it really is. We need to move traffic there, and we need to not worry about having parking on Lakeland Drive for adjacent property owners. They've got options, and they'll have to utilize those options.
The increase in the fees, though, does allow for him to bring back these options, right?
Absolutely. That's part of the deliverables that are in the scope of services.
Thank you. The resolution has been made and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That carries.
Item number three had to do with the request to purchase and replace the current aerial bucket truck at Public Works Public Safety. Staff requested permission to purchase this aerial bucket truck in accordance with the 2013 capital outlay program. The current truck is 17 years old with over 4,000 hours on it. Also, the boom manufacturer is no longer in business making replacement parts, very scarce. The cost of a replacement truck through the National Joint Powers Alliance is $179,424. The 2013 capital outlay program includes $197,937.50 for the replacement. Staff is recommending selling the current truck either on public auction or advertisement. After some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the motion to approve the purchase of the aerial lift truck through the National Joint Powers Alliance as presented.
Second. The motion has been made and seconded to approve the purchase of the aerial lift truck through the National Joint Powers Alliance as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Item number four had to do with the Dangerous Weapons Ordinance. Our police chief, Mr. Weifels, presented an additional revision to the ordinance that was requested by our committee at the last meeting, and it was to include language similar to what is used by Hutchinson, Minnesota, which allows the discharge of bow and arrows on approved waterways for the purpose of taking fish. The committee discussed the proper, the proposed ordinance amendment, and a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the motion.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to introduce Dangerous Weapon Ordinance for the hearing.
Is there a date for that hearing? We're supposed to set tonight, too?
November 18th.
November 18th.
There wasn't one in here. Okay, so then the motion would include, the hearing date would be November 18th.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Item number five was to accept project number 1201A and authorize final payment. Staff recommended final acceptance and payment to Dunick Incorporated for project number 1201A, which was the reconstruction of portions of 5th and 9th Streets Southwest in the 2012 Street Reconstruction Improvements Project. All the required paperwork has been received. Final quantities were agreed upon by staff and the contractor. The payment consists of the final adjusted quantities as constructed and the 5% retainage. Staff noted the final amount also includes deductions for both bituminous disincentive and salvage, bringing the final amount to $2,074.46. The project came in under budget. Following some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce a resolution to accept project number 1201A and issue final payment to Dunick in the amount of $2,074.46.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to accept the project number 1201A and issue final payment to Dunick Incorporated in the amount of $2,074.46. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries.
Item number six also had to do with accepting a project and authorize final payment for number 1101. Once again, staff recommended final acceptance and payment to Dunick for project number 1101, the reconstruction of various streets in 2011 Reconstruction Improvement Project. The project also includes the addition of project number 111-12 by a change order. This consisted of a portion of 4th Avenue Southeast, 11th Avenue Southeast, 25th Street, and 20th Avenue Southwest due to failing street conditions. All the required paperwork has been received. Final quantities were agreed upon by staff and the contractor. And once again, the payment consists of final adjustment quantities as constructed and the 5% retainage in the amount of $21,768.10. And again, staff noted that the amount included deductions for bituminous disincentive and salvage. Following some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and approved for the following resolution, and I will move the resolution to accept project number 1101 and issue final payment to Dunick Inc. for the, in the amount of $21,768.10.
Second. The motion has been made and seconded to accept the resolution of project number 1101 and issue final payment to Dunick Incorporated in the amount of $21,768.10. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries. And that motion carries.
Next item was old business. Our police chief, Mr. Weifels, reported the jail census that day was 80 people, and calls for, or reports of calls for the last two weeks stood at 678. Under new business, we had a easement for Mr. Quam. Staff brought to the committee ongoing efforts to alter or eliminate an easement that was incorrectly granted as part of the airport project. Efforts to resolve the matter with the property owners have been unsuccessful. Conversations with their attorney indicate that the city should take action to reacquire the property interest, possibly even by condemnation. Staff read a resolution authorizing preparations for the acquisition of certain property interest at the Wilmer Municipal Airport, and you all had an attachment on that. Adoption of the resolution would allow the city to begin the process to reacquire the property interest given up by the easement. After some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the resolution to authorize staff to begin the process to reacquire city property interest at the airport.
Second.
Is that a resolution, by the way?
Wait a minute, it's that city.
It is a resolution, yes.
Okay. To authorize the staff to begin the process to reacquire city property interest at the airport. Is there any discussion on that? I would ask if we would have either Kevin or the city administrator, Charlene, to tell us a little bit about that. Why, I learned a little bit about it at the meeting that we had this afternoon.
There is a, there's a parcel of, there is an easement that was granted to the property owner as part of an actual mediated settlement when lands were being acquired for the new airport. That easement is in the runway protection zone. The easement that was granted, again, as part of a mediated settlement, is a permanent easement. The FAA does not desire nor really recognize permanent easements. They have indicated to the city on more than one occasion that we need to reacquire that easement or, so that it's not a permanent easement, that we could grant a license agreement or access, but it cannot be a permanent easement that runs with the land. We have tried to subsequently work out a mutual agreement with the property owner. We've not been successful to date in doing that. And in conversations with the city attorney and with the FAA, we just feel it's necessary to go, to take this step so that if necessary, we could condemn the easement to reacquire that and reacquire the rights to that. It is, it is necessary to do so, to come into compliance at the new airport so that we can receive FAA funds. And we've been working on this for a number, for quite a lengthy time and haven't made sufficient progress with the property owner.
Would I be correct in assuming that Mr. Quam is a real loser in this?
I don't know that I would characterize it as that. I think we are trying to work, we've tried to work out an agreement. We'll continue to try to meet and discuss with him and see if there is another alternative or mutual agreement, but we feel at this point, the recommendation to the staff, the recommendation to the staff is that the council take this action so we can pursue all remedies if necessary.
Thank you, Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Put a little more simply for the public, it's an easement so that he can cross
Correct.
Airport property to farm another section of property.
That's correct.
And it's my understanding that there is, there is another way to get to that property.
There is, yeah. It's less, you know, and I guess in his opinion, that may be less preferable or desirable, but there is another access to that property.
Any further discussion? And we have a roll call.
Councilmember Dacken.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Abstain.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Abstain.
Five ayes, zero nays, two abstentions.
That motion carries.
Point of clarification, may I ask why the two abstained?
Is that proper?
Mr. Mayor, I believe that the council member is free to ask that question. I don't know that there's any obligation of those who have abstained to give a reason. I suppose it's up to them.
Our final topic was brought up by Mr. Amen. He inquired if the city had a policy regarding idling vehicles. He said he was approached by a citizen who was concerned about city vehicles being left running. Our Public Works Superintendent, Superintendent Mr. Leitabor, said there was no policy, but then in the very cold weather, some decent vehicles may be left idling, but not unattended. If there's no further questions, I would move to file these minutes.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Public Work Safety Committee report for October 29, 2013. Is there any discussion?
Yeah. Councilman Anderson. Thank you. I'm not sure we got an answer to, did we, on the abstention thing, I see everybody's pulling out their books. Is it, is it voluntary to disclose, or is it, if asked, do we need to disclose?
We do not know, Mr. Mayor, at this time.
I seem to remember looking at this, but I honestly don't have it memorized, so it might take me a moment to find the answer.
I think, okay.
I believe, I believe under conflict, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I believe under conflict of interest that you have to state your reasons why or give written notice to the city attorney prior to the meeting.
Oh, I think, Councilman Ron, you're referring to the conflict of interest policy that is adopted by the city. That may be correct. I don't have that in front of me.
Right, but I don't think there is anything for abstention. It's not that I am aware of, that I saw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From what I understand, the council person can vote yes, can vote no, you can abstain or you can pass, and I don't believe you have to explain any reason why you're voting. I mean, there is definitely a reason, but there's, I don't believe you have to.
Mr. Mayor, it says here, "Any member has the right to abstain from voting on any issue and must abstain from voting if he or she has a financial or personal interest in the outcome of the vote."
But it doesn't say.
It doesn't address anything else.
I think we'll pass on that, then. I think we'll leave it the way it is.
They're not mandated.
Okay.
It's optional.
Where were we?
We're gonna file the minutes.
File, we have a motion on the table?
Yes.
All those in favor, unless there's further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Consideration of an on-sale intoxicating liquor license, Pep's Sport Bar.
Kevin, would you like to explain that to us, please?
Mary Annish, members of the council, you have before you an application for an on-sale intoxicating liquor license located at 1312 Lakeland Drive Southeast, commonly remembered as the Roller Rink, for Stephen James Peppin to begin an establishment named the Sophie Jade LLC, doing business as Pep's Sports Bar. The Wilmer Police Department has completed the background check, criminal history check, driving record, and everything seems to be in order. Mr. Peppin will be listed as a resident manager for the initial startup. It is staff's recommendation that we approve the on-sale intoxicating liquor license through the year ending April 25, 2014, which puts it in synchrony with the other annual liquor licenses.
Move to approve. Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the liquor license. Is there any discussion? Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, that used to be the Double D Club, and they were open. I got a call and somebody was concerned about this. The Double D Club was open two nights a week, I believe, Fridays and Saturdays, and there was, in one particular year, there was over 300 calls to that particular location, and correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we not close that? Some of the reason was because of the neighborhood and the neighbors complaining?
The council took action after about the fourth violation to terminate his license. That was under different management. Police department has stopped numerous times telling them to tone down the volume of the music. They refuse to listen to the police, then they're gonna suffer those consequences. I don't believe this man will do that, and that neighborhood concern should not resurrect itself.
So that the, it's sewn properly, then, for this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? A motion has been made and seconded to approve the liquor license to, what was the address? 1312?
1312 Lakeland Drive.
1312 Lakeland Drive Southeast. And it's by, it's April 25, 2014. Is there a roll call? Is there any discussion, first of all? Roll call.
Councilmember DeBlick.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Abstain.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays, one abstention.
That motion carries. And we have the consideration of a deferred special assessment for senior citizens and/or disabled persons. Who would like to speak to that? Kevin?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have two actions to consider before you at this time of year on this year's improvement. The cutoff is October 31, and the application has been made by the one individual that you have before you. It's a qualifying senior citizen, and staff's recommendation is to approve that application. Also before you, back from the 2010 street project, we now have an individual who has paid three years of that project, but does qualify for the remaining seven years to defer that payment as a qualifying, a disabled person. And it is staff's recommendation that you also approve that application. They are separate resolutions, just because the interest rate and the years are different, and we follow the interest rate by the adopted interest rate of each project.
Mr. Mayor, I would move approval on the first one of 1312th Street Southeast.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the defer, deferment of assessments, special assessments on the Walsh property located at 1312th Street Southeast. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
And DeBlick.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. And the second resolution is that we defer the
The 2013 project.
2013.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move approval of the 2013 on 2004 22nd Street Southwest.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to defer the property taxes?
13.
13 property taxes on the Latsum, did I pronounce that right? The Latsum property?
It's the address.
At 2004 22nd Street Southwest. Is there any discussion?
Assessments, is it not? On property taxes?
What did I say?
It says.
Special, it's the special assessments on that project.
Special assessments on that project.
For the 10-year period.
Is there any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries. We'll move into old business. Is there any old business to accomplish? Councilman Ammon.
We have new business. We have to down, new business.
Yes, I understand. Mr. Mayor, quite privileged to ask a question. Old business could be something that we discussed and approved earlier in the meeting, correct?
I guess anything prior to this, this exact minute would be old business.
Just want to make sure, don't want to break the rules of parliamentary procedure here. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to bring, bring up a topic underneath, the consent items underneath, applications for appointment to city board committees. I would like to reopen those minutes if I could.
Sure, go ahead, pull those minutes.
Actually, you need to
You can do that, Kelly.
Work with that.
We approved them.
No. They've been approved. You would have to make a motion to reconsider.
If you're gonna reconsider the vote, otherwise you want to talk about it, you could, but that vote has been completed. Do you want to reconsider the vote?
No, I don't want to reconsider the vote. I don't want to get technical on any individual. That's, this is regarding the applications of the Wilmer Convention, as Visitors Bureau is Rick Schuler and Rice Hospital Board Andrea Carruthers. I read both their applications. I'm just curious, did the mayor appoint these people, or how does this process work in through the city charter? I know sometimes the mayor makes the recommendations after he interviews and talks to the people, which I believe is part of the city charters, or Bible, or city charter, I believe gives the authority to the mayor to appoint and recommend to the city council the approval of the people on the committees. And I'm just curious how this came about, or how the names came up in this particular case.
I think in terms of the Rice Hospital, the mayor can speak to this, but the mayor did meet with Ms. Carruthers and make that recommendation.
Yes, I did.
And then Mr. Halliday, maybe you can explain the CBB appointment and the process for that. That is a little bit different.
The Convention and Visitors Bureau functions under our ordinance for lodging tax, and so we collect the tax. We have a standard agreement with the Chamber of Commerce, who runs the Convention and Visitors Bureau, that they fill the positions on the Convention and Visitor Board by an adopted policy. And that policy has various positions, such as three people from the lodging industry, two from the Torgerson Property, the Chamber Executive Director, the city clerk, county commissioners. And so our policy has been, on behalf of the mayor, that the CBB finds those people that fits those positions, then asks for the bio to be filled and submits it to the mayor, and it comes to council. That one is a little different than the mayor finding all the other committees.
I know there are some discrepancies there. I didn't quite understand the process and how it was taking place, so I just wanted to clarify how that, if that's in conformance with our city charter or not, or if that's, since you said there is a separate policy on that with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, I just wasn't aware of that, the appointees and how that process worked.
If I may answer your question, I knew nothing about this appointment until I read it in here.
CBB.
CBB, right. But the other one, Andrea Carruthers, I did meet with her and talk with her and got the approval from her.
Okay. It's a technical push. Well, it's just a technical, we can bring it up labor relations, just as far as that, whether that crosses over boundaries in appointing people to the ongoing trust of the taxpayers, who's, who's in, who's in charge of appointing people to that committee, whether it be us or does the review process have to go through the mayor? Because I believe that as part of the city charter, that appointments are appointed by the mayor. I'm just curious how it came.
Well, I think the bottom line is, you have reviewed the policy for the layout of that committee. It was very contentious when it started back in the 1990s, and that's why it was laid out in that criteria. So on behalf of the mayor to follow through that, they fill the positions by who's absent from that criteria of those 13 people. It's easier if there is a board of five and there is no criteria. They're just all citizens, like the planning commissioner or someone else. When this has to come from a certain area, as to put a balance on the opinions of running the Convention and Visitors Bureau, we really assist the mayor on that, the board does. Otherwise, perhaps, he would not recognizing it, could put on six people from the Torgerson properties, and they would sway decisions. So that's the balance they want.
Okay. I'm not implying any of that, Kevin.
Okay. Okay.
I just wanted to know how the process worked in this case, and I wanted to have an explanation and public dialogue about it. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Go ahead, councilman.
Just as liaison to the Convention and Visitors Bureau, I think the request went was for someone to, to see if someone would be interested in, in being on the board from the Candy Entertainment Center. And I believe the Candy Entertainment Center presented his, suggested his name. He's the general manager, is that correct?
That's fine, all we have to know is how it's done.
Yeah.
But that was at the, at their request to fulfill that area on the, on that board.
No, I think it's a great appointment, excellent appointment choice. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilman.
And we have new business. Do you have anything to do with the new business?
Well, new business, I just wanted to announce the decision. I was asked at a previous council meeting on who I was going to appoint to the committee or the A individual from Labor Relations Board to serve on the hiring process and interview process with new applicants for a city department, city, new city department positions, department head positions. And I came to the conclusion that I really don't want to, as I expressed earlier, I like the power of empowering everyone rather than just a chairman or a individual to share that responsibility, to have that responsibility. I think it's equally shared, so. Balance of responsibility should be shared equally and not to, not to be mandated by any position such as the chairperson. And I would be, I would like to be spreading the interview responsibilities among all labor relation committee members. It's a joint team effort. So in the future, I will be attending the interview process for the public works engineering position, and after that, we'll be rotating the process through all the members of the committee that's taking the training. I just want to announce that in case there's any questions.
Thank you. With that, we will do the announcement of the council committee meetings. Councilman Anderson, finance.
Finance committee is not going to meet next week. We will be meeting on that special meeting that I talked about in the minutes. That will be on November nineteenth. That'll be here, that'll be for all council members. We're going to finalize the budget. We're going to stay here until we do.
We'll start at three P.M.
Three P.M., I'm sorry, yes, three P.M. start.
And Councilman Christianson.
We're going to take the week off. No public work, public safety.
Councilman Auburn.
No labor.
And Councilman Fagerly is missing, so who's the assistant?
There is, I don't believe there's a community, there is no community development scheduled next week either.
Okay, thank you. Councilman DeBlick.
One item, Mr. Mayor. Just remind you again that the visioning 2040 community meetings scheduled for Wednesday, November twentieth. There's one meeting scheduled for eleven thirty to one thirty P.M. at the Convention and Visitor Center. And for that, if you wish to have lunch, there's an eleven dollar fee and a RSVP to the Wilmer Lakes Area Chamber of Commerce if you wish to have that lunch. Second meeting that day at the, be held at the REAC building, and that is from six thirty to eight P.M. So should be, be the same topic covered at both meetings, so.
Thank you. What was the date again, Bruce?
Wednesday, November twentieth.
November twentieth.
November twentieth, okay. I'll move to
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
A point of privilege, could we get a copy of the minutes of all the 2040 plans? I think we've received one copy of the minutes, and that's about it.
I will check if we haven't been putting those in.
If you could email that to all of us, that'd be
We can do that.
How this process took place and what the solutions were and what they, all they attached, attacked the problems. Thank you.
Councilmember?
There is some, a report online, is that correct?
The Quality of Life Index, I think, is, should be available on the Wilmer Lakes